Thank you, Chairman. I've reread what's in chat and I would like to propose it exactly as it stands in chat.
councillor Cooper Marsh.
Sorry, I was just going to say the meeting hasn't been recorded yet, so this is now.
It's just started, Justin.
Sorry, that was my fault. I was too. So councillor Chapman would like to propose the motion as it's written in chat, which is to propose to grant £10,000 to Three Pillars feeding the homeless with funds released upon signature of a service level agreement, agreeing to a sliding scale repayment of £100 per month should the lease be terminated within the first 10 years. Councillor Christine Green, did you want to second that?
Yeah, I'm still happy to do that. Thanks.
Good. Right. Councillor Cooper Marsh.
Thank you. For the purposes of the Finance and Governance Committee, this could be drawn £4,150, which is the remaining budget from the, bear with me, the Covid-19 fund, and then the remaining £5,850 to come from community support.
Seems like an excellent suggestion. This is, I think everybody's in favour of all the wonderful work that Three Pillars do in our community. Councillor Chapman.
Chair, I'd just like, I've just reread it again after you read that out, and it needs to say for unexpired, £100 per unexpired month of the lease, because we may not be here in 10 years or five years' time or six years' time, and this occurrence may happen, and it currently reads £100 per month of the lease. So it needs to say, needs to have the word unexpired.
Councillor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chairman. A point of order. Are these terms agreeable to Three Pillars? There's no point in us voting for this if Three Pillars don't agree to it.
Jed, are you happy with these terms?
You're muted, Jed.
There you are. I'm used to talking to myself. Sorry about that. No, we're in agreement with that. It seems only fair with the amount of investment that the council's prepared to give that they have some kind of levy there that gives them some comfort feel. So not a problem for us.
Thank you, Jed. Councillor Christine Green, are you happy to include the word unexpired? Councillor Chapman?
Absolutely, yes.
All right. With that, then, we'll move to the vote. All those in favour of this motion, say yes.
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 Anybody against? Any abstentions? So that's carried.
Councillor Thorpe abstains.
Thank you, Councillor Thorpe. So that's carried. Agenda item number seven, report from HDC, county and district councillors. Do we have any reports from our district or county councillors?
No, not really.
Chairman, that's me.
Councillor Cooper Marsh.
I'll just, just town councillors now, I've now switched committees within HDC. I've moved from the growth performance to governance, corporate governance.
Chair, can I just say thank you and leave your meeting so you can get on?
Thank you very much.
And can I just thank you again on behalf of the Three Pillars for your very generous support? And we really appreciate it. Thank you.
I think we'd like to thank you for the work doing in the community, Jed, to you and to Mick and all your volunteers. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
It's a great team effort. We, you know, like, today, we opened the third house in Peterborough, six bed, and we're going to, we're in discussions with HDC to come down to Huntingdon and St Niets with multi occupancy houses, which is a fully supported accommodation with mental health, drug, drink rehabilitation units to support any needs in St Niets and Huntingdon. So that's the next phase. So, Mr Chair, thank you so much. And councillors, thank you on behalf of the Three Pillars. I'll let you get on with your business now, and I'll carry on with my bits and pieces. Thank you.
Thank you, Jed.
Take care.
Councillor Thorpe, you've got your hand up?
You're muted.
Sorry, Mr Chairman, it was a hangover from the previous point of order.
Councillor Maslin.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think I might have missed it. You asked on section seven, reports from HDC councillors.
Yes, please.
All I was going to add was, we've lost two more planning officers. Louise Newton, who I believe some of you know, but also, more importantly, Jacob Jasmas left us. We haven't been informed yet of replacements, but not a good, not a good week for HDC, I don't think.
Councillor Chapman.
Thank you, Chair. Two things. Firstly, I would hope that councillors saw my email regarding councillor John Davis, the chairman of the district council, passing away. I think that John was one of those, John was one of those old style councillors that put residents, residents first on all occasions, was very dedicated to his community, was always a very fair and friendly person. And he will be sadly, sadly missed, I think, by everybody at the district council. Secondly, I'd like to make you aware that I've been, I've been in contact with the chief exec regarding the land at Eton Meadows. I have actually provided a copy of a transfer dated 1974, which transferred ownership of that land to the district council. There is, apparently the district council legal department can't find the transfer of ownership. It had, it wasn't registered by the district council, the land registry, because land registration didn't come in until later. And it's subsequently been re-registered by a buyer who purchased papers at auction. So I've asked whether or not Three C's are going to look into it and register their ownership of the land. It's currently under, it's currently under an adoption agreement with the county council, but the subsoil still belongs to the district council. And the highways adoption agreement under 263 of the 1980, I think it's 1980 Highways Act, creates a freehold ownership in the, in the topsoil. So I'm asking, I'm asking the district council to look into that clearly as urgently as possible, because there is a planning application pending that this council objected to.
Thank you. In future, it would be helpful if we could get some written reports from our district and county council colleagues. I'm sure there's much more going on at district and county council than, than we're hearing here. And I think some of us who are not represented in those places are in the dark about something, so I'd appreciate it if in future we could have written reports from our district and county councillors. Agenda item number eight, census 2021, for us to receive a presentation from the Census Engagement Manager for Huntingdonshire and Fenland from the Office of National Statistics, Christine.
Hello.
Hiya.
Hi. Thank you for having me in your meeting. I'm not going to go through the slides. I did send them to Karen to be circulated to councillors. And of course, we have just passed census day, which was on Sunday. So I'm not going to do hands up and name and shame those who have done it and who haven't. But I will assume that as councillors, you have all completed your census dutifully. I just wanted to pop on really and say, please spread the word that if people haven't completed it yet, there is still time. There are some rumours out there that if you didn't do it on Sunday, then no point doing it now. And obviously, that's not the case at all. So people have all the way through March and April to complete the census. And if they need help, there's three options of help going forward. The first one is to call the National Contact Centre, and the number is on everybody's letters. It's 0800 1412021, and they can translate for you. They can take your census over the phone if you cannot fill it in digitally or on paper. And they can send you all sorts of accessibility documents or paper copies in the post. The second option, if somebody would like to spend kind of half an hour with somebody walking them through it, Huntingdonshire Volunteer Centers are the local nominated census support centres. And there is one in St Niets. They're doing telephone appointments at the moment because of Covid. But if you call them on 07849 794490, they will give you an appointment time and spend a good half an hour with you, talking you through the census. And the third option is that the census officers started work today. So those are your door knockers. They have PPE, so they will have a beautiful face mask. They'll be branded census 2021. They have an official ID badge with a number. If anybody's worried they're not legitimate, they can call the census hotline, check the badge number. The local police are aware of who these people are and their badge numbers, and they won't be going into anyone's homes. But for those who haven't completed it yet, they are going to knock on doors and offer assistance. So they have language leaflets with them, and they can help you complete it digitally and get you the help you need. So still plenty of options to complete the census.
Thank you, Christine. That's really helpful. And perhaps Deputy Town Clerk, we could share that information using the town council's social media channels so we can get it out to as many people as possible. Because I think I agree, there is some misconception that people think that they had to fill the survey in by Sunday night, and people have done it, maybe are a bit nervous. So any, any way we can spread that message would be very grateful. So thank you, Christine. That's really good.
Thank you.
Chair, sorry. Can I just ask one question? Christine, would you be able to email me those three options?
Yep.
Across, and then I can, as the chair suggested, share them online. And also, just to put people at ease, I did miss the deadline on Sunday and completed it the following morning. And I had, like some people, thought I was going to be fined by missing the Sunday, but you don't, you do have more time to complete it.
No, no, absolutely.
Nobody's perfect, so as long as they get it done, keep it.
I did, I did mine on Sunday afternoon. It was, it was, it was the highlight of the weekend in my house. And I was disappointed. It only took 30 minutes to come to fill in as well, so.
Yes.
That's, it's a really good point, though. The people door knocking, the census officers, they are there to help. They are not there to collect a £1,000 fine. I know it mentions the legalities in the letter, but if there are people listening to this, please do not ever give anybody cash at your doorstep. That, that's not what census officers do. They are just there to help.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Councillor Johnson.
Yes, just out of curiosity, because obviously, in all of the cities, we have grown over the years quite drastically. And it would be nice to have a kind of a number of idea of how many people are living actually in certain cities. Do we know if we are going to be able to get all the statistics that see the census? How easy is going to get for us to get all the statistics which are going to be very useful to represent our residents?
Absolutely, yeah. So census data, just the numbers that you're talking about, high level data will be available from April 2022. So it's always a year after the census, although district councils will have a slightly earlier sight of it at the end of this year to do some quality assurance checks on it. And of course, your personal data that you put down is locked away for 100 years. So you can't have that yet.
Thank you, Councillor Sandy Giles.
Thank you, Chairman. And I was going to ask the young lady there, what, what officers were going to be around? Because I was one of those officers 20 years ago, so I was very pleased to hear that you're actually going to have physical people around knocking on doors. Because I know from my own experience how pleased some of the people were who hadn't been able to fill, to, to fill in their forms for various reasons. And I totally agree with councillor Johnson. Yes, it will be very nice if our district and county colleagues actually use the right numbers this time and decided that perhaps they have been working on the wrong numbers all these years. You know, and there are one or two more of us in St Niets than they think there should be. So good luck and look forward to hearing the information next year. Bye.
Thank you, Sandy. Across Huntingdonshire and Fenland, there's nearly 100 local people now working on the census for the next six weeks. Either as census officers or team leaders. So lots of local people on the ground to help, which is always good. And thank you, Karen, about Black Cat. I did an appearance on their breakfast show a couple of weeks ago, so they have the numbers.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine, for that, that presentation. We really appreciate it. And I think all of us as councillors will be trying to pass that information on to any residents who have not yet completed the survey. Agenda on item number nine is the annual town council meeting. Members to agree a date to hold the annual town council meeting no later than 5th of May 2021, as recommended by NALC. Did we not do this at the last meeting? Or was this something different?
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So, no, the previous meeting was agreeing the date for the annual town meeting, which is the meeting, that's not an official meeting for the residents. This is the annual town council meeting where you elect a mayor and do the standard business at the beginning of each term. And this is on the agenda, as I, along with Teddy, I attended an SLCC branch meeting a couple of weeks ago. And this was spoken about, because as members are probably aware, we've got this deadline of the 6th of May at the moment, where virtual meetings will stop and government are being lobbied by NALC, CAPEL and other bodies. So their recommendation at that meeting, that they advised that all councils should try and get their meetings in before the 6th of May, including their annual town council meeting. And I know Little Paxton, I believe, are holding theirs on the 5th of May.
Yeah.
We could hold ours on Tuesday, the 4th of May. So it's there for members to, to discuss.
Councillor Chapman.
I'm quite happy to propose that we hold it on the 4th of May.
Councillor Chapman's got his hand up. Sorry, councillor.
Yes, Chairman, I was going to propose that we hold the annual town council meeting on the 4th of May.
Councillor Maslin has beaten you to that. Would you like to second his proposal?
Go on, Barry, go on, second it.
I'll second his proposal, although he did jump in. I won't hold it against him.
Okay, I'm given that this is a recommendation from now. Could actually see that we wouldn't need to debate it too much. So I think we can probably move straight to the vote. All those in favour of holding the annual meeting on Tuesday, the 4th of May?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Anybody against? Any abstentions? So that's carried. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Agenda item number 11, councillor Cooper Marsh earmark unspent expenditure.
Chair, you've missed one.
For 10.
Oh, sorry. I wasn't trying to hide my poor attendance. Agenda item number 10, councillor attendance. Members to note that councillor attendance record from the period June 2018 to present. I'm sure you've all had a chance to look through those. I'd like to congratulate councillor Chapman, I think, who is the only councillor to have attended all of the meetings. And unless there's any discussion on that, I think we're going to note it and move on. I think I would also observe that the attendance has been very much greater during the period since May 2020, which is probably partially due to the Zoom meetings, which has, or the Teams meetings, online meetings, to be very successful. But it also might be down to my chairmanship as well. So we'll have to decide between ourselves what, which, what would be important.
I'll second that, Chair. It's down to your chairmanship.
Modest to a fault, Chairman.
It probably is. It's one of those two things. All right. So agenda item number 11, earmark unspent expenditure, councillor Cooper Marsh.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's, it's as it is in the agenda, is bringing up here to swap to me now. So we are, to consider a recommendation from FNG to earmark the unspent expenditure at the 31st of March 2021 for the following budgets: more inspections, cage lockup, tree maintenance, electric car charging points, carbon neutral projects, play areas, ban stand, speed reducing signs, tourism and marketing website, youth council provision, provision for splash park, loan repayments, electric expenses, highways improvements and equipment and furniture. I like these to be earmarked just for forward planning for this council. I like to keep a healthy reserve, and if we can earmark as much as we can. So if we need to dip into these pots for maintenance, or for example, the more inspections that nipped us in the butt last year, where we didn't have the money for it. So that's what they're there for. I propose that we adopt these as the chairman of FNG.
Thank you. Councillor Thorpe, seconds.
Councillor Giles, before you do that, councillor Thorpe, councillor Giles has his hand up. Derek.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I was going to propose that, not that we, you know, put this into future things, but just to ask a few questions before we make a decision on that. In particular, I'm unaware of how much there is in play areas left, if, if there's any carryover for that. Also, perhaps tree maintenance is something which we do need to be able to pull on in, in future years. Now, I'm not clear whether these are going to go into reserves or specific reserves. And I'd like that clarification first. There's lots of questions on, I want to ask on this. But basically, where I'm coming from, if we've got any money left over from the play area budgets, which are welcome to know how much there is, then how's about if we can fund the fence at Shady Walk for £6,000? That's just a question to the chairman. But yeah, that, that's, that's me to be carrying on with for a few minutes or two.
Okay.
Councillor Cooper Marsh.
So these are, these are for earmark reserves. So they will, they're ring fenced, for, not a pun on your last comment, for, for those. And if there is enough in play areas, then there's always, there's always the function of the operations committee to ask for that money from that budget.
Right, okay. We have, we have a plan going ahead now. Thank you. Councillor Chapman.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I mean, I don't think councillor Giles need to be overly concerned about that, because I will be requesting an extraordinary town council meeting for next week to discuss specifically that, that item. The, the amount that we've got in the play areas, we did say earlier on that we would use that to offset against the shady walk requirement. So that's fine. But I, I thought, I was going to, I have my hand up to second this, but I think it's already been seconded.
I think councillor Thorpe was going to second it. Can we just hear from the RFO first, because Teodora's got her hand up? Yeah, hi, Teodora.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, basically, the categories that have been proposed and approved by FNG for earmarking, they, they have been either capital budgets in the 2021 budget, or they were identified as, as a budget items to, to budget in a year where we were not going to incur the expenditure just to spread the cost evenly, like the, like the, the inspections for the trees, the elections are examples of those. So we haven't gone through the income and expenditure account and identified anything that has not been spent, but rather took the capital items, which, which the council was going to spend, but mainly because of Covid, some of the projects couldn't go ahead, and anything that, that the council actually precepted for. So regarding the play areas, I just want to remind members that each manager, including the operations manager, receives their management accounts every month. So though I haven't been at the operations meeting, the, the budgets or what's left in the budget has been, has been with the manager. And, and I can't quote the figure at the moment left on the play areas.
No, we don't need to hear that now. Thank you, thank you, Teodora, but that's fine. We don't need to, to go through the details of the budget. Thank you for, thank you for your input. Councillor Thorpe, would you still like to second that motion from councillor Cooper Marsh? I think, okay, I think that, having talked about this, we can probably just move to the vote, can't we? So all those in favour of earmarking these reserves, say yes.
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 Anybody against? Any abstentions? So that is carried. Thank you very much. Agenda item number 12, internal auditors report. Members to note the second interim internal audit report from the council. I think that's noted. Thank you very much. Agenda item number 13, who councillor Pitt, the Eton Community Centre solar panels, councillors Pitt, Green and Chapman, I think, were the tender panel for that.
Almost, it's Pitt, Cooper Marsh and Chaplin.
Sorry.
Chapman even. Pardon me. Thank you. Thanks. So, so we've met some weeks ago, but we were just waiting on some references in order to satisfy our curiosity and, you know, satisfy sort of the companies that we had selected, you know, meets our criteria. So that, those references just came through in the last 24 hours, hence the late arrival of this report that was emailed through to councillors, to full council this afternoon. So just for a very quick summary, the, in common, I think, pretty much all of the companies attended put forward 150 panels, so 150 times 370 watt photovoltaic panels. And this particular quote comes in at just under £37,000 for those panels. I understand that's about the equivalent of 21 homes, you know, the electricity needs of 21 homes, that will be on top of our roof. And then additionally to that, there is a quote for three times 8.2 kilowatt hour batteries. These essentially kind of getting on for the same size of battery you might find on an electric vehicle. And what that does is it takes the charge, the power coming from the solar panels, when it's not needed at that particular moment, rather than being sold back to the grid at 5p per kilowatt hour. It's stored in the batteries and then used within the building as required. So it means that rather than buying electricity at 15 pence per kilowatt hour, which is kind of the typical price at the moment, we can use much more of what we're generating. So the total cost that's been quoted is £47,747, excluding VAT.
Do, do we know what the payback time is for that?
So there is an estimate of that payback. It's not guaranteed, partly because our current meter doesn't do half hourly meter reporting. So you'd need that level of detail to be able to model accurately how the panels will, what's the word, interface with the way the building's used, as it were. But the estimate was 10 years for payback. So after 10 years, we'll have basically recouped the investment we've spent. So it will be cost neutral. After 20 years, it will have a net income of £57,844. That's obviously subject to all sorts of things. What that doesn't include is the maintenance costs. Solar panels don't have moving parts, so they're generally quite easy to maintain, and easy means cheap. But we have recommended as part of the tender board process that we set up an earmarked reserve and put a thousand pounds into that reserve per year in order to cover the cost of failed inverters. The batteries may need replacing after 10, 15 years. But basically, we're trying to make sure that it doesn't become an unexpected drain on our finances to keep this maintained. With that sinking fund, it means that if we use all of that sinking fund, so this earmark reserve, I should say, it will pay back after 12 years rather than 10, and the total cost of ownership will be plus 30. it will pay back after 12 years rather than 10. And the total cost of ownership will be plus £37,000 by the end of the 20 years.
Okay. And this, but the core argument for doing this is not necessarily a financial argument that helps, but the intention is to reduce our carbon emissions. This council has committed to try and reduce its carbon emissions to net zero by 2030. And I think this was one of the important factors and one of the important tools we have at our disposal that was recognised, recommended by Energize. So I think, what are the next steps? Councillor Chapman has got your hand up quickly then. On mute, Barry.
Sorry. Thank you, chairman. And I'm glad you, glad you brought that up. I mean, I, I support this, but I think we need to be clear on the reasons that we're doing it because the figures that councillor Pitt just mentioned. Don't include net present value. Computation. So when we're talking about a payback in 20 years of £2,000. If you look, for example, where in the figures that have been circulated, it says about 5%, sales. 5% sales inflation. Now, if there's 5% sales inflation per annum, then there isn't a financial justification for doing this. But if the justification, which I fully support, is for us to reduce our carbon emissions. Then that's a different justification. So I understand, I understand that from you. I wonder what other, whether other councillors are looking for a financial payback or to reduce, to reduce carbon emissions.
No, I think that this was, this was only ever intended to be part of our net zero carbon initiative. Councillor Giles first.
Yeah, thank you, chairman. I'm a little bit concerned about the, the location. To put you in the picture, we've got PV panels on our roof and we face south. And I must say, when they were sold to us, the, the guy who sold us actually advised us to cut down slightly. We could have had 14. He suggested 10 because of an overshadowing of trees. And I thought that was very fair. We're very pleased with the, the, the output of these panels. And in fact, I just managed to creep in on the higher payback value. But it does worry me about the Eaton Centre because the roof alignment is east-west. And that does make a heck of a lot of difference on the, excuse me, on the productivity of these panels. And I wonder whether that's been taken into consideration in your deliberations with the, the payback time because we were told seven to eight years and it's proved a little bit longer than that. So I would treat that 10 years with great amount of cautions unless you're aligning the, the panels in a southerly direction. Because you can't see. Councillor Pitt, do you want to quickly come back on that?
Thank you. So there's, there's very detailed modelling data and images on this and other quotes that we received. To be honest, it's beyond my technical expertise to be able to decipher them to the level that I'd be feel confident to answer that question directly. We did seek advice from Energize, who are zero carbon consultancy firm that have been very useful to us in other matters, to look through the technical details of the quotes that were presented. And that didn't come up as, as a concern on, in terms of the, the way they're facing. I agree that south facing is ideal, but it was, I think that the way it's been modelled is on the condition of the way that they'll be, you know, sighted on the building. Just to come back on councillor Chapman's point about the financial benefit versus the the message that we want to send. I believe both of those are relevant and valid. I think that in terms of the payback rate, we're not considering this compared to other investments we might make. We consider this compared to other things we might do in our town. And there's very few opportunities that we'll be doing that's actually going to generate any kind of ongoing income. So I think on both financial and in terms of reducing carbon emissions. It's, it deserves to be voted through.
Okay. So we've got lots of hands up if we could do it quickly though, because we're running short of time. So councillor Johnson.
Obviously I'm fully in support, but can I have clarification on the financing? Have we got grants coming to support financing as that is part of the court? And just to get some clarification of where, you know, if it's different pot of money, we, we can go to, to, in order to ensure that we've got the best, you know, we can do with our money. Can you clarify, Ben?
So, wants that?
Well, basically.
Councillor Pitt, yes please.
Thank you. So we have two options, I believe, well, two options that present themselves to me in terms of how we can fund this. One of which is to use our steel reserves. Another is that we have £100,000 that we've put into a community buildings earmarked reserve or capital budget, capital expenditure budget for this coming financial year that starts in a few days. As I've stated in the previous meeting, I would be very keen to run any large capital expenditure past our strategy committee. So I think that rather than making a decision for council without any kind of due process, just tenderable coming back to full council. I think it's been much more appropriate for the strategy committee to decide what budget it wants to use in consideration against other projects that we might be looking at spending our, you know, capital monies on in the, in the forthcoming months or even years. So my recommendation would be to recommend, this full council recommends that we go ahead with the project and seek advice from the strategies committee as to which fund to use.
Sounds like a, a good proposal. Councillor Christine Green, who started all this off?
Not, no, not me. Residents did actually. I just want to remind those who raised the question that we did commission a report from Energize just a few years ago. And it was one of their recommendations, having started this building. You know, we commissioned that report, we spent money on it and it came back from them. So they felt that that building was suitable for this. So I think to reassure Derek that we, you know, that that was part of the report. It's not something we've thought up ourselves. Okay?
And also we're not going to reach zero carbon if we don't do it. So I think having committed to go to be net zero carbon by 2030, we're going to have to take every reasonable step we can to do that. Otherwise, we're not going to manage it. Councillor Maslin.
Thank you very much indeed, Chair. I agree with Ben that this is a good project for us. It makes us look good to the public, even if nothing else. It will make us, or save us money. Picking up on what councillor Giles said, our, our panels face west, so not the best location. And it's a 4.2 KV install and we get about 3,000, 3 KV a year. We don't get the higher rate, but it's paying for itself. And it's only money that will be sitting in the bank anyway. So that's all I'll say. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Councillor Chapman again briefly, if you could.
Chair, under our financial regulations, this would have to be deferred to the F and G committee. The, tonight's report is a report back on, on which supplier we would go to. If we were to proceed, but there is no recommendation from finance and general purposes on this project. So we need to resolve to put this to finance and general purposes.
Councillor Pitt, perhaps you could help us out?
I'm happy with that. I think the due process is important.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Right, let's, let's, all those in favour of putting this in front of F and G, say yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Anybody against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Thank you very much. Agenda number 14, we're quite short of time. Reports from outside bodies. Are any outside bodies who want to present a report? There was some written reports in the agenda pack or someone from councillor Pitt. Anybody else want to present a report tonight? Karen, you've got your hand up.
I have, yes. There were two, in addition to the ones with the agenda pack, there were two later submissions that were sent in from councillor Paul Davis and councillor Christine Green. I can put them on the screen or did they want to read out their reports because they came to me after the agenda?
I can just mention mine. Sorry Karen, I wasn't too late. I apologise.
It was, yes. It's okay.
I'm so sorry. I thought it wasn't. Regarding, I actually went to the AGM of the Huntingdonshire Volunteer Centre this morning because I was able to do it online. I'm not normally able to be there in person. Just to say that last, that this last year was their busiest year ever for car, the community car scheme. Due to the pandemic and needing to get people to places. And they had lots of volunteers who, who weren't able to work for whatever reason, who helped them. And after 13 years, Anne Bunting is retiring. You're, all of you, I think, know who Anne is. She comes to us regularly for a grant. She, she has been with the centres for 13 years and she has been manager for 10. And she is retiring. And we have a new manager starting in the middle of April called Rada Roy Chowdhury. And we'll no doubt meet, meet them in due course. So it was quite an emotional meeting this morning as Anne's last one. So I'm sure we're all very grateful to Anne for all the work she's done for the centres. And it's great to hear earlier that they're helping with issues with the centres for people that need help with filling those in. That was great to hear that they're able to do that. So they are, they are still very well functioning and very grateful for the grant we give them. Thank you.
Thank you to councillor Green. I think that the deputy town clerk did you disservice and your, your report did, did make the
Apologies councillor Christine Green. It was Emma Speed's report on the Splash Park.
Is there anything you'd like to say, Emma, on the Splash Park? Councillor Speed, perhaps, or not?
So, sorry, just to tap myself off mute. Just that Splash Park people are closely working with Teddy on reports and stuff that she needs. They've currently given everything. So it's just waiting to hear back from Teddy on the next steps really.
Thank you very much. And councillor Davis, I think, has left the meeting. So he won't be able to give us his report. Agenda item number.
Chair.
Yes.
Sorry, can, can I just ask, I'll circulate Paul Davis's report after the meeting to members. Is that okay?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Agenda number 15, emergency systems. Members to approve the unbudgeted expenditure for the replacement of faulty emergency systems at the Eaton and Priory Centre. Who's presenting this? Is this from RFO?
Chair, Lisa's here, I think.
Or Lisa, community centre manager perhaps? What are these emergency systems?
I did submit a report to Karen.
It's in the agenda pack.
It went out with the agenda pack.
Yeah, so if you wanted to present it, Lisa, or add any additional comments.
Okay, yeah. So just to say, so we had the servicing done at the beginning of the year, which is a yearly service on the emergency lighting at both centres. And it was just reported back from our contractors that the, the lighting system itself is faulting in the fact that it doesn't stay lit for the required three hours. And so basically it needs some major replacements. That will be battery packs and whole units. Because they're not charging properly to maintain the safety spec.
Thank you very much. What is the total cost of this? Replacement?
£7,595, 40p plus VAT, Chair.
Councillor Cooper Marsh? On mute, Justin.
Sorry, chairman. I was, I was going to propose that we, that we fund this from the community centres earmark reserve for the full amounts. But I'm willing to hold my proposal if any councillors wish to speak before me.
Councillor Chapman's next.
Thank you. I'm not sure what, can, can Lisa tell us what standards we're not, we're not aligned with and whether they're mandatory or advisory standards?
So to my knowledge, it is the, it's not advisory, it's mandatory standards. And I think the requirement to have the emergency lighting working for a minimum of three hours is so that if there is an emergency situation and the emergency services need to get back into the building. Then obviously they can see they're not at risk of causing injury to themselves because obviously the lighting's not, not working.
Thanks, Lisa.
Mandatory.
One supplementary, and that, and that, that is, is this for a complete replacement of the system? And if it is, how old is the old system?
It's not a complete replacement. It's just replacement of all the units that are failing. So as far as I'm aware, the Eaton's emergency lighting hasn't been upgraded since it was first built, since it was first opened. So that's 10 years plus. And as for the Priory Centre, I know a lot of the lights were upgraded to LED lights a few years ago. As for a last major service, I don't know that information, I'm afraid.
Thank you, Lisa. Councillor Pitt?
Thank you. So just on that point. So basically these all run off batteries and the batteries are constantly kept topped up and it isn't really good for batteries. So these things do fail. You know, from time to time. So it sounds, I had a email correspondence with Lisa earlier today and it sounds like all the due diligence has been done to ensure that the work is required. We've had a few well, motions without notice and other discussions about spending money outside of our budget tonight. And I thought I'd just dig up our financial regulations, seeing we take the time to write them, we should follow them. So ordinarily, well, so one clause 4.7 says all non-budgeted spending requests from committees are to be passed to F and G committee for consideration. However, it does also talk about emergency expenditure, which I think this counts as because this is basically a safety feature. So emergency repairs over £5,000 should come to full council with a, with a full information provided in the agenda pack. So on that basis, I think we can approve that this evening without needing to go to F and G. I'm delighted to say. I think councillor Cooper Marsh's suggestion to take it from the community centres capital fund is a good one. So if he has already proposed that, I'll second it.
Shall we just wait for councillor Thorpe, who's got his hand up patiently and then we can do that?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd just like to make the point that this was a health and safety issue. We cannot delay it.
Thank you. Voice of reason as always, councillor Thorpe. So councillor Pitt, are you happy to second councillor Cooper Marsh's proposal?
Yes, please.
Moving to the vote then, all those in favour, say yes.
Yes.
Anybody against? Any abstention? That's carried. Agenda number 16 should be uncomplicated. Charity dragon boat race. To consider recommendations from the P and E committee that due to the uncertainty of the current pandemic situation, the charity dragon boat race 2021 does not go ahead and the net costs of £9,000 are moved to the earmark reserve with a view to putting on an additional events and or marketing events later in the year if the COVID restrictions allow. Councillor Pitt?
Just to hopefully save any debate on this. So since we made that recommendation, HGC have put in various stipulations about any activities on their land which would make this impossible, even if we wanted to do it.
So are you proposing this?
I'm proposing that motion, yeah.
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Cooper Marsh.
RFO's got a hand up. I'm not sure if that's an old one.
I can't, I can't see her hand. Teddy, you didn't want to speak, did you? No, I think.
No.
No, okay. Thank you, old hand. All right. So we'll vote on that then. All those in favour, say yes.
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 Anybody against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Agenda item number 17, proposal from the chair. It is hereby proposed and possibly seconded, that in accordance with section 12 of the Public Bodies Admission of Meetings Act 1960, that as publicity would be prejudicial to the public interest by reasons of confidential nature of the business about to be transacted. It is advisable in the public interest that the public and press be temporarily excluded from this meeting and are here with instructed to withdraw. Having seen the agenda items, the first one is in relation to in relation to a very sensitive matter to do with a burial, and I am fully in support. So I'm going to propose that we move into part two. Do I have a second, uh?
Chairman, point of order here, or clarification, I should say, it's not a point of order. Is the number 19 also subjected to confidentiality?
Deputy Town Clerk?
It was held in part two previously because it can be discussing staffing.
Okay. So yes, both of these agenda items are under part two.
Right. Okay. Fair enough.
So did I have, I proposed it. Did I have a second?
Yes, two days, chairman.
Seconded.
Thank you. All those in favour, say yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone against? Any abstentions? Therefore, we must clear the public gallery and also make sure that you do not have non-councillors within a shot of your conversations tonight. So if you could do that, please. Deputy Town Clerk, could you stop the recording?
I will do. And I'm also watching the attendee list as well.
If anybody who's not a.